Good evening. I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 11th, 2023 at 6:32 PM. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings to the extent that in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in-person and virtually using the Zoom platform. As this is a regular city council meeting, we will have public testimony tonight, also an opportunity for announcements of local events. The information for the Zoom is in the agenda. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item, either virtually or in person, you were to have emailed your comments to the city prior to 12 noon today. Individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder prior to the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. And as I said, we'll also have the city events announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. We gratefully acknowledge the Clackamas, Chinook, and Kalapuyia Native Peoples on whose ancestral homelands we gather. We honor them as a vibrant, foundational, and integral part of our community. We recognize their accomplishments as the native stewards of these lands, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. We thank those who have connection to this land and serve as stewards, working to ensure our ecosystem stays balanced and healthy. Without a full representation of everyone's experience, we will never be able to design and develop a better future. Our agenda tonight includes our consent agenda and reports, and I'll get into that in a few minutes. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riekel. Counselor Riekel? We can't hear you. Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Milch.
Present. Please stand for the flag salute. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor, we see us, or we see you, can you see us?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, okay.
Okay.
So let the record show Counselor Riekel is also present on Zoom. All right, the consent agenda includes our regular minutes, May bank balances, budget report, May check register, legal cost report, department head reports for June 2023. We have, we will consider approval of a Personnel Services Agreement between the City of Gladstone and Amy Lindgren for municipal judge services, and approval of Resolution 1219 authorizing the city administrator to sign an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, for lending personnel within Clackamas County when personnel are unable to get to normal reporting location. This is an item we reviewed at our work session a couple of weeks ago. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of it.
I'll second that. I think Ben coming down, if you get a chance to come down on Monday and watch Amy do her job, it's a great, it's a great thing, she's doing a great job.
That's right, we quickly go over some of these things, but Judge Lindgren is doing a great job, and that's why her contract is here on the consent agenda. We're pretty much, I think, in agreement on that. And, all right, it's been moved by Counselor Huckabee, seconded by Counselor Alexander. Any discussion, any items that a counselor would want to have removed from the agenda?
I'd like to pull number seven.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll pull that item. Let's deal with that one now, then. So turn to item seven.
I just had a question about it.
Okay.
And my question was, we had an additional agreement with the judge, did we need that in here? That went, that was because she oversees other jurisdictions, and that's not part of the agreement, or it is?
Nope, that's a separate agreement.
Okay, that, and then I'm just fine.
Okay, well, technically, we allowed you to pull this from the agenda, so let's, let's go ahead and deal with this item first, and then we'll look at the rest of the consent agenda. So, is there a motion to approve item seven, the contract with our municipal court judge?
Yes, I'd make that motion.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Alexander.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Roberts. Any further discussion? All right. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riekel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, item seven is approved. Now we'll return to the remainder of the consent agenda. I apologize for not asking about that first before I got the motion to approve, but Counselor Huckabee and Counselor Alexander moved and seconded. Are you still on board for those? Okay, all right, we will consider the remainder of the consent agenda to have been moved and seconded by Counselors Huckabee and Alexander respectively. Any further discussion? Tammy, call the roll, please.
Counselor Riekel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, the consent agenda, the remainder of the consent agenda is approved. All right, correspondence. Administrator Betts, is there any additional correspondence?
I have nothing, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Next item is the report from the Clackamas Fire District, and we have Chief Brown here, and.
No Chief Brown tonight.
No Chief Brown tonight? All right.
No, tonight, tonight you're stuck with me, Assistant Chief Brian Stewart. Okay, normally we'd have the crew with me as well, but the regular officer called in sick, and I decided to give them the evening back to themselves.
They deserved it this week.
They do, they do. They're outrunning calls, in fact, they were on a call when I drove, drove into your parking lot tonight. So, a couple of things just to get on your radar. One, thank you for a great Fourth of July, and Schmober, thanks for a great Fourth of July. It was a lot of fun slinging dogs with that guy, and all the staff from, from the volunteers and the police department that joined us. I don't know, I'm sure they have the exact number, but a lot of hot dogs went out, a lot, a lot of, a lot of great smiles. And I will say for me, Chief Brown being there, we had a good time with, with our piece, but the crews had a great time. So Engine 322 was down on the street next to one of the squad cars letting the kids go in and see things. It's just that, that touch and feel that, that we've really enjoyed. And Nick and I really appreciate the opportunity to do that here in Gladso. Let's see, a few things to just get in front of you. Last month, I think I shared that we were on a, deploying a task force out east. Well, tonight, we're deploying a task force out east. So there's a fire out in Condon, and we've got some members on, on a countywide task force going out there as well. And part of that is just, it's fire season. In the west of the Cascades, even the energy release components and way we measure fuel intensity or fire intensity at the head of a fire is up there. It's, it's back in 2020 levels, and what that means to us is, is when other components come in, like wind, and obviously ignition points, we can have some challenges locally, but we're prepared for that. We're staffing for those as, as the red, red flag days and those worrying days come up, we're, we're upstaffing for those. But it's also just a reminder of our work on a day-to-day basis, whether it's medical calls, people being in their homes, making sure people are hydrated, and in cooling shelters if those come up, our work to make those things happen, as well as structure fires, things move hotter and faster in structures, just like they would in the forest. So we're out there trying to work on those things. I think I heard last night that we had a fire that you folks may be interested in hearing about, so there was a fire on the forehead block of Arlington, which first due engine was Engine 322. They were on scene just over three minutes of dispatch, which includes the dispatch tones going off, address being read, all those pieces, them getting into turnout gear and getting on scene. They jumped on that, so they were there within just over three minutes. The first 24 units were on, or 24 firefighters were on scene in nine minutes. Couple minutes later, we had three more, so a total of 28 firefighters responded to it. It was a exterior fire on a, on an office building, single-story office building, that went up the outside, got into a mansard roof, which is an exterior roof that kind of sticks out and, and is encased on the bottom, but able to keep it at the exterior. Firefighters did a great job, crews did a great job responding. So, again, just an example, and I think in your, your board packet this month, you had another example of, of a more intensive call with some victims, or a victim that was recovered from there and is, is doing great. With that, I think the, the last piece that I would share, and I may be misreading what the comment was, but you, I think that you had a motion in front of you, or agreement to share personnel between agencies when you can't get to your regular reporting duty, we have the same thing. So we have folks who live in different places, we have folks who, you know, work across bridges or whatever it might be, and we do the same lending of, of personnel and making sure that when, when the community needs us, we're there serving where we can serve. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. That's one of those agreements we hope we'll never have to put in place, but because the circumstances would be pretty dire if that were to happen. I think it's great that within the span of one week, we saw the two, you know, things that we have identified as community, the most important that we were looking for in making this relationship with Clackamas Fire, your involvement in the community, which we saw at the Fourth of July, and your quick response to fires locally and, you know, collectively in the, in the region as well. So, you know, we're seeing the best of both in a span of one week, so it makes me feel good. Are there questions from counselors?
No questions, just thank you for such a prompt response time last night, that was exciting to wa, uh, listen to.
Absolutely.
I didn't want to watch it, but I was listening to that and seeing everyone turn up so quickly, that was, you know, exciting for our community that we have such a great partnership, so thank you.
You're welcome, thanks for letting us be part of it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a great evening.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is a presentation from the Clackamas River Basin Council, Eric Button, Riparian Specialist. Staff, do you have an introduction on this?
I think you handled it just fine.
Okay.
We have a PowerPoint that I believe Eric will go over with you.
Push the button on the, on the microphone to have it on. There you go.
And so, hello everyone, thank you for the invitation to speak, I'm really happy to be here, and as a Gladstone resident of a little over a year now, I'm especially happy to be here and get to meet all of you. So, my name is Eric Butler, I'm the Riparian Specialist of the Clackamas River Basin Council. We are one of Oregon's Menor Watershed Councils that were inhab, or enacted under the 1996 Oregon Plan for Salmon Recovery. And our work, we are really fundamentally a partnership-based organization. You can see in our mission statement, we're here to foster partnerships for clean water and improve fish and wildlife habitat and the quality of life for everyone who lives, works, and recreates in the watershed. Something about 60% of the land area of Gladstone is within the Clackamas watershed, and so we're, have quite a bit of involvement in the community around here. And a little background of the projects, we've, Gladstone Public Works, Justin Poyser approached us a while ago because they had need to meet some of their stormwater regulation goals, and they're really looking for some local projects that could help manage some of the stormwater issues that they have. At the same time, within the same week in fact, the Tiger Water District approached us, is they're interested in providing some funding to help protect their drinking water source. You can see in the picture on the right, that's the drinking water intake at the end of Portland Avenue. That's mostly an intake for Lake Oswego, but Tiger gets a fair share of that water as well, and so they're interested in kind of spreading some of the receipts around and doing some work in this watershed where they get a significant amount of their drinking water. The Clackamas River all told provides drinking water for over 300,000 households in the Portland metro area, all the way from Estacada down here to Gladstone. And so this is really kind of a perfect fit because these two opportunities came together at the same time. And so, we were asking around, looking for a good opportunity to do some kind of project that would take advantage of this funding opportunity and help the city meet its stormwater goals, and also be something that's, where it really provide valuable amenities to the public. And we settled on doing a restoration project at Cross Park, and it's partly because there's interest from the city. It's, there's some pretty good natural resources at the park already, and we really wanted to do, kind of protect those and help enhance those. And because it's so close to the Portland Avenue water intake, is going to have a very direct and very visible connection to the resource that we're trying to protect. It's also something that's very publicly visible and publicly accessible, it's a chance to kind of show the work we do as a watershed council, protecting natural resources and doing community engagement and education throughout a watershed, and it's very accessible. And finally, as like I said, it's a chance to protect and enhance the existing natural resources. There's a really good tree canopy in the park already, it's providing a lot of shade, a lot of, a lot of food web support for the river, it's really doing good work for the watershed, and it's just kind of a chance to invest in that, do, help protect it, remove some of the weeds and some, do some stabilization on some of the slopes and just kind of take advantage of what's already there and make it better. And so our vision for the project was to do about two acres of riparian habitat restoration. And you can see that there, we've kind of hired the park in multiple areas, so the steeper, more densely vegetated areas, we hired contractors to do the work, but there's also sections of the park in the middle that are quite accessible, it's kind of surrounding the middle picnic area, that seemed like the perfect opportunity to do volunteer, a series of volunteer projects. One of the things that Tiger Water District agreed to offer us was support to do specifically volunteer activities. And then also, we have what's called the Stash the Trash Program, where we distribute trash bags to river users all up and down, pretty much at all the boat ramps from MacArthur Park all the way down, down to Clackamas. And this is something that's really made a big difference in terms of keeping the river clean. We stock these Stash the Trash Bag stands at various parks and put-ins all up and down the river, and people use them. We have to re, we'll typically put out about 50 or 60 bags onto each one of these stands and have to restock them every week. And we can see that in the results from our Down the River Cleanup every September as well. The amount of trash that we've been pulling out of the river is steadily declining for as long as we've been doing the project. And so it's empowering river users to help be our stewards on the ground, has been a great thing. And so we have a Stash the Trash Bag Stand at Cross Park, as you might have seen, at the entrance by the restrooms. And we have local volunteers who are actually stocking that for us. And so far, we've been really busy. The project really began in April of last year, where we had a group of students from Saven Schellenberg come out to do an initial weed pull in the, in the planting area, and the Stash the Trash Bag Stand got set up last summer. This was one of the stops on the Down the River Cleanup, where people were getting out in the river in their rafts and canoes and drift boats, and we even had a group of snorkelers out and were fishing trash off the bottom of the river, and so it's just a great end-of-year party that clean up all the, everything that the Stash the Trash Bags don't get. And we did a big volunteer weed pull in, last October, as featured in one of our more popular Instagram reels. And we also had contractors come out to do spray treatments around the same time, then they came back and did a follow-up treatment in May after the planting occurred. So the contractors cleaned up a little bit of debris after the initial cleanup, and then they did the planting in the steep areas in February. Then we had another volunteer work party last March, and we planted the middle sections of the park, we had great turnout, we got everything we wanted into the ground, we pulled a bunch of additional ivy and blackberries that got in this the first time around, it's looking really great. And it's fun walking past the park, you've just as a local resident, and seeing some other park users admiring the work that we did. And so volunteers have, have been a really important part of this, as I've been talking about all along. So, the volunteers planted 530 native trees and shrubs in the, in the middle section of the park, above and below the picnic area. We've had great turnout from local residents, we had a scout troop turnout for the planting event as well. It's been a great event, as we, as you can see, we had absolutely perfect weather for it as well. So, next steps, we have another work party coming up on August 5th, so from 9:00 to 11:00 AM, we'll be mulching the plants that we established to help them survive the summer heat. Thankfully, they've been getting some irrigation spillover from the, getting the lawn, the lawn swarding, that's really helped, but getting some mulch rings around the plants is just to really help hold that moisture in the soil and help the plants thrive. And then we'll also be doing a little bit more blackberry whacking and stuff, because that's always growing back. A contractor maintenance will be continuing for at least the next two years, most likely three, as funding allows, and then we're also hoping to be able to get some more funding in the future and put up an interpretive sign, talking about the history of the project and telling some more about the story of the park and all the great partnerships that help make the work happen. And speaking of partnerships, I want to thank all of our partners, Justin Poyser's been really wonderful to work with, and everyone at Gladstone Public Works, they've been very supportive, they've been removing all of the, all of the blackberries and ivy that we've pulled out, they've been providing us with dumpster service, and just been wonderful to work with. Tiger Water District obviously deserves thanks for providing the funding that's made this all possible. Our partners for the Stash the Trash Program, especially an organization called We Love Clean Rivers, they've been really great to work with. The class from Saven Schellenberg really got the, got the ball rolling on this, and all the volunteers who turned out from local community to help out with our projects. And with that, I can take any questions anyone might have.
I want to allow Counselor Riekel to make any comments, this is the second time that she has heard this report, and I think she encouraged you to come here tonight, so the rest of the council could hear. Counselor Riekel, do you have anything to say?
I just want to say how excited I am about all this information, and I think that it's just a prime example of how partnerships can benefit our community. One thing that I'm thinking, the August 5th event, isn't that during our community festival? Or is that the Sunday of that weekend?
It's, it's Saturday.
Yeah, it's, it's the Saturday morning of that weekend, yes.
Okay, all right, yeah, I just was thinking that in order to promote potentially getting more volunteers to help, it might be, I don't know if that's something that can be included, but I guess that's a rotary decision, not ours. But again, just, Eric, I wanted to say thank you so much for taking the time to come down. I was so impressed with this when you came to the Parks Board, and I really think that the Parks Board is also very interested in, in partnering with you to, to grow this program in our community, so thank you for your time.
And thank you again for inviting me.
Other counselors that have questions or comments? Counselor Garlington?
I just have one question, where do you ask people to put the trash once they collect it? Just take it home?
Yeah, you can take it home, it's, usually the bags are, the bags are about five, six gallons, and they're, they should be able to fit in a municipal waste, and, but people can also drop them in city-provided dumpsters or whatever service is around. Often people are putting it in one boat, landing and taking out in another, and they're usually, as often dumpster services, a lot of those, such as Barton Park or Carver Riverside.
Okay, and then I like the idea of your interpretive sign, so I hope that that does get funded somehow, and, and that you guys can get that put up there, that would be great. Thanks, and thank you for your work.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes.
Could you tell us a little bit about maintenance? So, as someone who has tried and struggled to establish native plants in my yard, they do require some maintenance, so how long do you have funding established for maintenance of these plants? And then once that funding is gone, what kind of involvement from our public works is going to be required to support this project?
Well, at our current budget situation, we're easily going to be able to cover spray work for the rest of this year and through next year, then most likely well into year three. Typically, in a project like this, three years of treatments is pretty effective at getting the plants sort of free to grow. Sometimes you end up in particularly difficult circumstances, we might, I might look for some kind of carryover funding to keep that going, but if it's in a situation where it's, things are pretty well under control, I'd be, feel pretty comfortable handing this over to Public Works in the future.
All right, all right, thank you very much for coming, we appreciate this. Next item on our agenda is announcement of Gladstone City Events. Is there anyone here who has requested to make an announcement, or do we have people in the audience who are planning to make an announcement tonight?
We have one from Bob Everett.
Good evening, Dr. Everett.
Good evening, everyone. So, it's always wonderful to be here, and once again, I appreciate the time to be able to, to make my little statements, and to, and Commissioner Riekel, that was interesting because I was thinking the same thing. As you were saying that, I follow the fifth, okay, that's, you know, the parade starts at 10, so how can we, we can at least, we'll, you know, Bryce and I will work out something, we'll see if we can promote it a little bit, too.
Awesome, thank you.
To get, to get, get, get some, get some individuals down there. Too bad the parade can't go through there, and everybody pull up something. So, but anyway, I am here on behalf of the festival, which will be August the 4th and 5th. We are working hard and diligently to, to get everything in line. We're going to start at noon on the 4th, we'll be setting up early, and of course, we'll probably have some people, some kids out there with the blowups right away, they were, they were pretty excited. We're going to have the Beer Garden, it's going to be enlarged, so we can handle more bingo-goers, because last Sunday, Saturday, it was jam-packed, and we're going to have entertainment pretty much throughout. The only time we don't have stage entertainment will be during bingo, because it was a little bit of a distraction last year. So we've elected to sort of hold back, got some other events going on, so there will be in the, in the city flyer in August, so everyone be sure that they take a peek at that. Also, a couple of events sort of surround that a little bit. Kiwanis does have their, their pancake breakfast on Saturday morning before the parade, so if you want a meal, head on out to that. That's always, seems to be pretty fairly well-attended, and a lot of fun. Also, on Sunday, even though we're not associated together anymore, there is going to be a, the car show, as it has been in the last, last years. I think they call it the Happy Days now, if I'm not mistaken, so they've taken the time. But anyway, that's pretty much what's going on. We'll be pretty open until, we're going to have a movie in the park on Friday night, as we normally do, we'll have things open till about midnight, and then Saturday night, we break down, and if anybody wants to join us at 1:00 in the morning, we'll be more than happy to have their help as we put things away. Any questions?
Bob, in the past, there's been either an insert in the Clackamas Review or something else that kind of published the schedule of events, so people can just look at one sheet, are, are we going to see something?
It will be, it will be in the city newsletter.
In the city newsletter, great.
Yeah, not in the review. I know the review is changing, so I don't know, you know, how that would sort of fit in general then, too, but we, I have, I will bring them in. I do have a little flyer that I'll bring in, and I'll put some on the front, and they're in my car, and it does have sort of a, it has a listing of the events.
Well, that's great, that's convenient for people to see the times and, and the listing on, on one sheet.
And it's, you know, it, it, we're going to have those there, too, at that day, so.
All right, any other questions? Counselor Huckabee?
I've been doing a weekly check on your volunteer signups, how is that looking as of today?
I, I can't say that I've looked at it lately, but we are getting, we are getting more people. I do appreciate you pushing that on Facebook, I saw that, and of course, I pushed and share and. And of course I pushed and share and like it. But I think we are getting a few more people and I do want to mention, yes, thank you for saying that. We can use some volunteers. We need people at the, at the blowups. Generally throughout the course of the day, the dunk tank, things like that. There's a whole list that Bryce has put in there and most of the time it's just one person and they have a two hour shift and they can get a, basically a drink, which if you're an adult, that could be a beer and a hot dog. So you're fed and we gladly do that for any, for any individual. So if you get a chance, you can go on the website, gladstonecommunityfestival.com, not org. And, cause that's confusing. And on there, there's a volunteer listing then too, along with some other sort of information that, that as to what's happening. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to Rotary.
Thank you so very much. Thank you. And as I say, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Bryce tomorrow a little bit too. And we'll see if we can't push a little bit with the, with the cleanup. I think that's, I thought, oh man, that'd be nice to have some sort of interest in that too.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, everyone. I do appreciate it. I love the city. Thank you for all you do. Police Department, Fire Department, all the city councillors. We could not do this without, and Public Works, I'm sorry. We cannot do this without everybody's help. That's just, we've said it every year. I've done it every year. So that's 10 years now. Okay. Thanks. Bye.
All right. We move on now to our regular agenda. We have a number of items tonight. An intergovernmental agreement between Oak Lodge Water Services and the city of Gladstone relating to the provision of domestic water, wastewater and stormwater services. We have a resolution updating the master fee schedule. We have a public hearing regarding amending, to consider amending Gladstone's municipal code, chapter 17.14, the multi-household residential zoning district. We have then two items related to submitting to the voters continued local option taxes and an intergovernmental agreement between the Clackamas County Juvenile Department and the city of Gladstone. So we begin with item number 12, the intergovernmental agreement between Oak Lodge Water Services and the city of Gladstone. Steph?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. As you recall, we had a work session on this item on May 23rd to talk about a proposed new intergovernmental agreement with the city of Gladstone and Oak Lodge Water Services relating to water, wastewater and stormwater. I'm going to give a brief overview of the project. Oak Lodge Water Services in Gladstone have adjacent and overlapping territorial boundaries. Within those boundaries, each entity operates a water and a wastewater collection system and manages stormwater. Territorial boundaries and utility systems have evolved over time and Oak Lodge Water Services in Gladstone have generally worked together to build their utility systems in an efficient manner throughout their combined territories. As a result, portion of Gladstone's water utility system serves customers located within Oak Lodge Water Services territorial jurisdiction and portions of Oak Lodge Water Services water utility system serve customers located within Gladstone's territorial jurisdiction. The wastewater collection systems of each entity are interconnected with the vast majority of wastewater in these areas flowing to Oak Lodge Water Systems Treatment Plant. For stormwater, Gladstone has the primary responsibility for managing stormwater runoff from the rights of way it controls. Whereas Clackamas County has the primary responsibility for managing stormwater runoff from the rights of way in Oak Lodge Water Services territory outside of Gladstone's boundary. However, Oak Lodge Water Service helps the county manage some stormwater facilities and portions of each stormwater system lie within the boundaries of the other entity. As part of efforts to develop and coordinate utility systems, Oak Lodge Water Service predecessors in Gladstone have entered into at least six different intergovernmental agreements originating from the 1970s, which themselves have been amended. Some of these agreements have broadly outlined each entity's roles and responsibilities, while others have addressed the provision of utility services to specific customers. It has become clear to the entities that the previous IGAs no longer adequately capture the full relationship between the two entities. For many of the previous IGAs, the language is vague, leaving staff from both entities with many questions regarding the intent of those IGAs or requiring lots of interpretation that may change over time. Staff and attorneys from each entity have been meeting periodically for the past five years to discuss the details of the new IGA that would combine many of the provisions of the previous IGAs into one place, update those provisions to match current business practices and allow the entities to coordinate their utility systems on an even stronger basis going forward. When we had the work session, we had mentioned that we were going to bring back to you several exhibits. And tonight those are included in your packet behind the IGA. Specifically, you have exhibit one, which is the Oak Lodge's territorial area. Exhibit two is Gladstone's territorial area. Exhibit three is the location of water mains that are part of each party's water system. Exhibit four is each party's service area for water service. Exhibit five is each party's service area for wastewater service. And we have a 5.1, which is an exception of addresses to that. And then exhibit six is the wastewater improvement list for Gladstone's wastewater system, which the city has committed to doing beginning in late 2024. Couple of items we would like to go over and that is on, I believe it's exhibit three and four. You will see that there really is no streets identified in those maps. So I'm going to have our public works director and our finance consultant talk a little bit about in general where those areas are, where we have overlap and we have our, our accounts there. And then the other item is I'm going to have our finance consultant talk about the exceptions that are listed out specifically in 5.1.
So the, the streets that are involved in this, if, if you look on 12 dash 24, which is exhibit four, both 1224 and 1225 are almost identical. But the roads that we're really talking about are Oak Ridge Drive, Brayden Court, Partridge Circle. Those are all east of Oakfield Road. There's a few houses also on Valley View Road. And then in the very top corner of the map, it's showing Armay Road. There's four houses that are there that are part of this as well. And then as you, you come down Hall, Hall Avenue, there's Hardaway Court. It's about middle of the, of the map. And then there's another section just down from that, which is Portland. The dotted line is basically Portland Avenue and Glen Echo. And then the only other street that's in there is Birdsong Way. And then on the very, very bottom, there's a small section there. It's actually one address off of McLaughlin Boulevard. Those are all the, the, the streets that are affected with this are part of this. And when you look at exhibit four on 12 dash 24, you'll see where there's a dotted black line there and just below that dotted black line is a blued out area. That are the, those are the four exception properties that Jackie had mentioned during this.
And with those exception properties, the reason they are called out on this is that those four properties have Oak Lodge Water Services water meters and water lines and are billed directly by Oak Lodge, well, will be billed directly by Oak Lodge for their water services only. But they also are on city sewer collection lines. So we, we will be billing the city sewer. It will include our collection cost plus the Oak Lodge pass through costs and that. And then we will also build the city storm charges on there. So in this, because of the anomalies with these four accounts, we will be able to, each agency will be able to recover our costs as necessary.
So just to clarify, they will get one bill from Gladstone or, or they would get two bills?
They would get one bill from Gladstone for sewer and stormwater service. And they get one bill from Oak Lodge for water services.
Okay. Most of the people that are in the Oak Lodge sewer service area, they still get, do they get one bill from Gladstone that includes the Oak Lodge rate? Or, and then we remit to Oak Lodge or?
When they are on our water, which the rest of the customers are, then we bill them and they are billed for water sewer and storm. And then we remit to Oak Lodge through the averages that are calculated once a year. And we remit to them monthly then for their Oak Lodge sewer customer.
Okay. Okay. So I think a lot of people in the city are familiar with the fact that there are different sewer rates for Gladstone that are on West and Gladstone residents that are on Oak Lodge. But the billing all comes on a Gladstone bill. They get a, they get a water bill that looks the same, except that one light item has a different charge basis. Okay. Thank you. Do you have more to say on this?
No, that, but we just wanted to say that's just one example of all the complexity into this agreement that we're trying to consolidate.
Well, I appreciate the work obviously that went into consolidating decades of agreements that changed as the city boundaries changed and, and everything over those years. And so it's good to have it all put together in, in one document. Are there questions from councillors on what we're about to review? Yes, Councilor Garland?
On page 12, three, it indicates if, an amount of fixes from that INI is $707,525. So does that not include the discovery work? Or I thought we were talking about something over a million at originally. I'm not sure why that, I'm pretty sure that's the amount in my mind.
No, the amount that's listed in section six on that page, $707,525. That is the original amount that we agreed to in capital projects. It's also the amount that was approved in the biennial budget.
And it wasn't more, our approval amount wasn't more than that?
I believe there, in the budget, in the biennial budget, we also had discussion about the 1.2 million in total that the city will be doing for INI work. But that was not just the Oak Lodge portion. That was overall.
Okay. So there's another $400,000 in other improvements that we will be making on INI?
Yes, but that is in other areas of the city.
Yeah. So there's, this is kind of two separate. We've got the INI project, which is in the west portion of, of the city.
Yes.
These capital projects are in the Oak Lodge portion of the city.
Okay.
So two, two different projects, two different dollar amounts.
Okay. But combined is the 1.1 we had talked about from the total fund?
No, it's, it's considerably more than that.
Oh, good. I think, was it, 1.1 came from the ARPA dollars. That's the dollar amount I had in my mind. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. My question just, so this is, we're already in an IGA with them for, like it says, over the last 50 years. This is just going to null and void all that and we're starting a new one. All these upgrades, since I can upgrade it for, for the next 40 years?
Yes, we consolidated all of the IGAs since 1970 and this will become the new master IGA at for a 40-year term. That is correct, councillor.
Chad Jacobs, our city attorney is present at the meeting on Zoom. Chad, do you have anything to add regarding the preparations? I don't know if you were the one that helped negotiate this or other people from your staff. But anything that, anything else that you think we should know before we take action on this?
No, I, I wish I could take credit for all the good work, but it was actually Ashley, Ashley Driscoll from our office. And then Tommy Brooks, who's actually in the audience today, was the attorney representing the district on this issue. They both did really great work. I've reviewed the IGA and, and was briefed by Ashley on it today and I strongly recommend your approval.
Thank you, Chad. All right. I think there's a recommendation on page 12 dash three. I will entertain a motion from the councillors unless there's any further discussion. All right. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve a new intergovernmental agreement with the city of Gladstone and Oak Lodge Water Services relating to water, wastewater and stormwater.
I will second.
All right. It's been moved by councillor Alexander, seconded by councillor Huckabee. Any further discussion? All right. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Roberts?
Yes.
Councillor Garland?
Yes.
Councillor Huckabee?
Yes.
Councillor Alexander?
Yes.
Councillor Riekel?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes. The motion is approved unanimously. The IGA is adopted by Gladstone.
And just for your information, the Oak Lodge Water Services Board will consider adopting this next Tuesday night.
Very good. Thank you. All right. The next item, in my questions to finance consultant Kathy Rucker, I made reference to the difference in rates between the two communities. And each year, a couple of times a year, hopefully not more often than that, we update our city's master fee schedule, which includes rates for water and sewer services and a variety of other rates. So we have action on that tonight. Steph, will you present this for us?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to start by having our finance consultant go over the utilities that you just discussed. Also in the staff report, we have mentioned of system development charges, community services, rental rates and the police body worn cameras. So we'll go ahead. Kathy, do you want to start?
Certainly. Okay. As Jackie was saying, and as you were commenting on there, Mayor, July 1 and January 1 are when we do our, our annual increases. The July 1 rates, we concentrate there on the pass through rates that we are, we work with from North, NCCWC, the North Clackamas Water County Water Commission. And then also Oak Lodge Water Services and then Water Environmental Services. And this year we have been advised as far as NCCWC goes up just around three cents per CCF, which has been about the standard there. Oak Lodge Water Services will be increasing by 1402 per month for the city of Gladstone customers. And then Water Environmental Services, their sewer charge will go up a dollar 40 per month. So we will pass those straight through. We've also updated our low income levels that are applicable as of July 1, 2023 for our residents who do qualify for that. We have updated the system development charges. The SDC methodology has always recommended that you go off of the ENR CCI, which currently with the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, currently running at 12%. However, we're going to be increasing our utility fees as of July 1, 4%, as you know, for both water sewer and ST, storm. So we determined that it was best to keep the SDC fees in line with the 4%. And also to the other surrounding jurisdictions, jurisdictions are holding their increases about the same rate. The police department is going live with their body worn cameras, as you know, there. So if we do get public records requests, we have to spend time redacting information and preparing what can be released. So the police department is determining how much they will be charging for that. And also some additional fee increases needed for local his history printouts and other information that they get requests for. The city also reviews the rental rates. You may remember, six months ago, we brought to the council the first increases in the community center rental rates in a very, very long time. We are increasing those a little bit more this year based on the cost of increase for janitorial services and the staff cost to monitor the building, et cetera, and uh take care of all of the rental activity that truly has been increasing at the community center. Then finally, January twenty twenty-three, technical plan review and development engineering fees were increased and language was added to the master fee schedule to clarify the intent of those costs. And this happened at the same time in January twenty twenty-three, where we discontinued the contract with Clackamas County for planning services and adopted a slate of planning fees for in-house administration. And now we're increasing increasing some and adding some fees based on the staff time and material costs used there. That's just a really brief overview. It is a busy year for us as far as the increases that we are the rate adjustments that we are making. So we have staff here if you have any other questions.
Yeah, there are a number of new fees or changes in fees. Let me ask one question about system development charges. Take us back to what we talked about when we were working on our budget. If there is development that we project will uh stimulate or cause growth in the community and subject to those charges, uh we collect those funds, but we don't generally spend them until we make some improvements to accommodate that growth. So the funds that we collect stay in uh an account specified and and defined. And then uh when a project comes along that the city is going to spend money on to uh to help accommodate that growth, whether it's infrastructure or park improvements or uh you know, adding a new road or whatever it is, uh then the funds are there. They have been accumulating. Uh do I have that about right?
Yes, you do, sir. The qualifying factor on this and and Darren would uh come specify a little bit more. It must be identified in the master plan as an SDC eligible project. So.
Yeah, when you if you look through the master plans, it has all the projects that are in those master plans. It lists if they're uh SDC eligible and then what the percentage that can be used for that project.
Okay, so that was the reason we developed those master plans is to identify the potential growth uh in a variety of systems in our community and to identify the way that we would accommodate that growth through specific projects. And we estimate their cost, and that is a determining determining factor in figuring out the amount that we charge for SDCs. So um I just as we it it's the biggest dollar item that people will see in these reports. And I want people to understand it's not randomly chosen. It's based on uh a specific methodology. And the increases that we are proposing this year do not reflect the level of increases that the construction community tells us is going on. But um we're we're keeping it in line with uh with some of our other increases.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Are there questions from councilors regarding any of these uh changes? The individual items and the individual schedule there highlighted on the remaining pages of this item. Counselor Cook?
Yes, yeah, I have two questions about um the fees. The first is maybe just a clarification on page thirteen dash eight for planning staff review. Um it's listed as planning staff review equals fifteen minutes billed in half hour increments at a hundred and fifty per hour. So I guess I just wanted clarification on what the actual increment is. Um is it fifteen minutes, half an hour or one hour?
I believe it's.
Heather?
And I think that might just be a comprehension. Yes, if I can if I can answer that actually, because I um sent the request in to put that into the fee schedule. And the intent was for it to be the first fifteen minutes is free. And after that, it's billed in a thirty minute increment. Um and that's consistent with the policy of providing customer service. But then when something exceeds um that amount of time, then we sort of go into like a pre-application type process.
Totally, thank you.
So maybe we can just update that language to make it a little more clear.
Yeah, we can add free behind on the fifteen minutes free.
So what you're trying to do is encourage people to come in and get their questions answered, not be dissuaded by the by the fact that it might cost them some money.
Right.
But once they get serious about it and the questions develop, then they begin to pay for the service you're providing.
Exactly, yes, because the city does ultimately pay for that time as well. We want to make sure we're answering the questions and making sure that that's happening. But we don't want to make it where it's hours and hours that are unbilled.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think when we approve this, we will do it with the understanding that we can clean up and clarify that language a little bit, so it's clear to the public.
And then my um second question is on page thirteen dash eleven. Um and it it also has to do with SDCs underwater for a four inch meter. Um I just noticed that this was the only line where the change was actually a reduction in cost. So I'm not sure if there's a reason for that or if that um if you could just provide some clarity around that change.
I we'll have to look at that one as far as the calculation on there. Counselor Cook, I'm thank you for catching that. I do believe that's typo. It should be four percent increase to the one fifty seven oh seven. Thank you.
More like one fifty six. Yeah. Thank you. Well, uh if if that requires correction too, we will include that uh in our motion. All right. Counselor Garland?
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
My apologies. Chief Schmerber, what is a local history printout and address record print?
I think it's. If I'm understanding those right, those are background history checks. If we're looking at.
Yeah, at the bottom of the second to the last paragraph, I was just curious.
Local, yeah, local history printout is is a local record for a backgrounds check. So if we do backgrounds checks uh for people or whatever, then if we run something, that's what's going to come up.
And it and that and then so then address record print would be a background check on a property?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, that was my first question. And then um Mr. Camperley, what when it talks about on page thirteen eleven, it talks about a street opening permit fee? I obviously potholes are a problem at times. And I think sometimes those are caused by somebody opening up the street and not getting that fixed correctly. Is that a hundred dollars enough?
What that is is to extend the permit. It gives a ninety day extension. And typically, that's only done to the um the large companies like PG Northwest Natural, stuff like that. The 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 issue is with a lot of those, they pre-plan everything and they'll come in and get a permit to do the work. And then they don't do the work right away, and it can sit and sit and sit for long periods of time. And so the idea behind that is is to extend that permit. There's a cost associated with that to um for administrative and stuff like that. That's what that cost is for.
And a hundred dollars is enough?
It's pretty simple to extend.
Okay, okay, that was my only question. Oh, I and then I was going to ask about where it's where the the lines were drawn out on page thirteen eleven. So are would the line would those uh sized meters still be the same?
Yes, the meters are still the same throughout.
It's just the price that's changing.
It's just the price.
Thank you.
I'm getting that right now.
Counselor Alexander?
Okay, I just want to Chief Schmerber, so um I'm just trying to understand. I mean, I understand with the body cams now, the footage, if someone wants to get it, you're gonna have to have an IT, go back and retrieve it and do all that. So I'm just wondering before that, a public records request to the police department, was there a charge for those two? Or is it just gonna be?
No, there was no charge. We didn't have body cams at that time.
Right, that's what I mean.
So this is this is totally new. Um and yes, we have the redacting uh software built in. It's still very difficult. So it's not like you can push a button and you've literally got to go through the entire sequence, the entire film to make sure that appropriate faces are covered, et cetera. So
So that's to pay your staff.
Being said, yeah, so that's paid staff to do that.
Okay.
And then and to ensure you get it right the first time, because you don't want to release something that's not releasable, you have to have somebody do a second check to make sure.
Okay, and and so I just found out recently there um if you did a public records request, I think for the for the city, you came, I think, and asked to to do one that there was also um a waiver if you were low income. Is there is that work for the police department too or?
I've I've never received one, so.
Okay, I just I just heard about it myself. They said they did a public records request and they they said they wanted to charge them. And and someone said there was a waiver form. They told me.
Yeah, I've not heard of a waiver.
Was that is that then when that was?
The city does not have a waiver form.
You do not, so they they were misled or missing.
I'm not sure where they got that.
Okay, I just wanted to find out. That's what I wanted to know.
Anybody can request one. We don't have a process or a form for one. That's what I'm trying.
Can request a waiver uh a waiver for the the cost?
Well, they can, but it would have to be extenuating circumstances because of the time involved to pay for the records.
Okay, so wouldn't have nothing to do with their income or anything like that.
We we have nothing set up for that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Huckabee?
Thank you. Chief Schmerber, to piggyback off of Counselor Garlington, you said local history printouts would be background checks. So who are we running those for? Because I'm assuming a citizen can't come in and say, I want to back on Joe Smo.
That's correct. So we run if we run background checks on people or for a different entities or what have you, it's it's just the cost and they're very local. They're not they're not in depth like a police officer background. That's not the case at all.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Um and then second, also on the body worn camera footage, I'm looking at this calculation and the very base price for requesting that is a hundred and ten dollars. Am I calculating that right?
So the twenty-five dollar initiation fee?
I mean, I'm doing the very base, the twenty-five, the forty-eight and the thirty-seven, because I'm assuming all apply.
Well, it it just depends on how many hours it takes. It's an extreme heavy lift, so we're literally pulling an FTE offline. They have to go through, so we're looking at salary. It would just be your typical hourly salary uh built in and then the second check. So that's what we estimated, so that would be correct.
Is that in line with county standards?
That's I think I believe we followed Clackamas County.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Chief Schmuber, I just want to go back to Council Huckabee's question about who can request the kinds of background checks that were you can't just say, uh my neighbor looks suspicious, can you run a background?
Yeah, no, 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 there's gonna be legitimate reasons. So yeah, let's just say we're doing neighbors helping neighbors type thing. That would be something very local, very low key, nothing, nothing, nothing significant. I haven't had one come in to do to a background check, but it may be for a a business or something that that we need to do something for.
You don't do them for the schools when they recruit volunteers. They have their own source.
That's correct. We do our own volunteer.
Okay, but a local organization that was going to hire somebody who might be working with children or uh something, they might come to you and request uh.
They may, but we'd probably refer them over to a another service.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure people don't think that we're playing fast and loose with people's privacy.
No, no, no.
Okay, very good. Thank you for raising the question and thank you for clarification on the answer. Uh I got on my calculator and I think that the four inch meter price, I think the 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 one key got stuck on somebody's computer. I believe it should be one fifty six, seven thirty-five. You are nodding your head and agree, so okay, so we'll we'll understand. And if there are other corrections that need to be made, um we've been keeping track of what's been said tonight. All right, other.
Mayor, I have one more clarification to Counselor Alexander's question regarding a waiver for public records request. We also follow that if we can get it in fifteen minutes, it's free.
Same, same.
Same same process is what Heather was talking about with the planning staff review. So if we have information that's easy easily accessible and already in a document and we can access that within fifteen minutes, we do not charge for public records requests.
All right, thank you to staff for preparing this report for us, for highlighting the changes. And now it's time for us to take some action on this. There is one resolution, uh number twelve twenty on page thirteen three that covers all of this and a suggested uh motion on uh page thirteen two. Is anyone ready to make that motion?
I will make a motion.
Okay.
I make the motion that we approve resolution number one two two zero, a resolution repealing resolution number one two one four and adopting a new revised master fee schedule that includes the meter sizes corrected and line one ninety-one corrected to one five six seven three five.
Is there a second?
I have a second to that.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Garlington. Thank you for including those uh corrections in your motion, seconded by Counselor Alexander. Any further discussion from councilors or any additional questions for staff? Counselor Rieckel, did you have a your hand up? Okay.
No.
All right. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Rieckel?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes, uh the motion passes. Resolution number one two two zero is adopted. This is a resolution, not an ordinance, so we are done with it tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, we move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item, number fourteen, is uh regarding um approval of an ordinance to make text amendments to our Gladstone Municipal Code GMC Chapter seventeen point fourteen, which regards the MR multi-household residential zoning district, city file TXT dash two three dash zero one. Uh on a legislative land use hearing, uh there is a special script I am to follow uh provided by our legal staff, and I will be uh reading that. And let's get, let's see. Yeah, the staff report comes after I make introduction. So uh the public hearing on uh the what's resolution ordinance number one five two two, planning file TXT dash two three dash zero one is called to order. The proposed amendments would modify Chapter seventeen point fourteen of the Gladstone Municipal Code, uh making changes for the multi-household residential zoning district. Uh I would like to call on our planning staff to present the report.
Thank you, Mayor Milch and members of the council. Good to be here with you this evening to talk about some zoning code amendments. We are talking specifically about the multi-residential zoning district. The Planning Commission work plan objectives for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five do include, and I'm going to paraphrase, to streamline the code and to bring it into better alignment with recent city policy initiatives and strategic goals. To ensure that Gladstone's housing policy initiatives and strategic goals are implemented through our adopted development code and to ensure compliance with state housing regulations, which are changing fairly rapidly at the moment. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of the proposed updates to the multi-residential zoning district. Let me just turn on the controller.
Actually, uh could you hold on for just a second? There's more of the script that I think I need to read at the beginning.
Sure.
Just to get through some things, and then I'll let you continue.
That sounds good.
Uh I was looking at the order of business, which I should have been clarifying to the public first, and let me do that. I apologize.
Sounds good.
So the order we will hear is the presentation of the staff report when it's time. Uh and I apologize for uh jumping the gun. Then the entry of correspondence into the record will allow public testimony. We'll have additional staff comments, questions from the hearing body, which in this case is not the planning commission, but the city council. Then the hearing will be closed with no further testimony from the audience. The council. Then the hearing will be closed with no further testimony from the audience. The council will discuss it and make a decision. It's here the rules regarding testimony. Any interested person may present testimony concerning the proposed amendments. The public hearing is your opportunity to comment on the proposal before the city makes a decision. We want to hear what you have to say. We want you to give us your point of view. Help us to understand why you have drawn your conclusion and how it relates to the proposal. Public testimony for this hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal and neutral testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to the city recorder. I have one here already completed from a citizen. I will recognize those persons wishing to speak and any questions should be addressed through me. When you testify, please state your name and, and, uh, city address or, or city of where you live for the record as this hearing will be taped. If you are participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. Now I want to ask the members of the council, i- is anyone planning to abstain from this matter or do you need to declare any conflicts of interest? This might be, for example, if you owned property, uh, in the, the zone in which we're discussing tonight. Uh, so I will start with Counselor Huckabee moved down. Uh, do you plan to abstain or do you have to, a conflict of interest to declare?
Neither.
I'm good.
All right, Counsel Alexander said neither. Counselor Riechel?
Neither as well.
Thank you. Counselor Cook?
Neither.
Counselor Roberts?
No abstentions or conflict.
Counselor Garland?
I have no conflicts.
And neither do I. Okay. We've covered all those bases. Now it's time for the staff report. You may continue.
Thank you. Uh, the proposal this evening includes changes to our chapter 17.14 of the development code. There's really, um, two types of changes. One is to what is permitted and not permitted to do in the zone. And the other is to dimensional standards for those uses. So right now you can do a duplex or a multifamily housing project. So apartments, condominiums, that sort of thing outright, without any further, um, need for a conditional use permit. But anything in between, which would be triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses or cottage clusters, also called middle housing. Those would require a conditional use permit. That's a barrier to providing this type of workforce housing in our city. And so what we wanted to do is make sure that we have a clear and objective review process for those types of developments. And then it's appropriately placed in the city in the MR zoning district. Um, similarly, we'd like to discourage new single family detached homes in this zone because we'd like that type of development to be focused in our R5 and R7 2.2 zones, where the comprehensive plan and the zoning code anticipate those lower density level growth. So what's proposed before you this evening is the change of use from, um, uh, conditional use for other middle housing outside of duplex. And then changing single family detached from being conditionally allowed to being no longer allowed if constructed after the adoption of this ordinance. Um, so in a, in addition to those uses, we have dimensional standards. This is a really busy slide, but I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that we are proposing some changes. So in the duplex, um, standard, you have a minimum lot size currently of 3,000 square feet. That's not being proposed to change. The, the rest of the code for MR currently says all other uses, 5,000 square foot minimum. Multi-household, you need a base of 3,000 square feet plus 1,000 per dwelling in it. So looking at that and how it could potentially be updated to reflect market trends as well as reduce barriers to this type of housing. We are suggesting that we change a triplex from 5,000 to 4,000. Keep the quadplex at 5,000 and then change the cottage cluster to match the multi-household minimum lot sizes. That does have an impact on your maximum number of lots per acre in certain cases, such as triplex, as well as in your maximum and minimum number of dwelling units per acre. Um, in the townhouse section, we currently have a 5,000 square foot minimum because it falls into the other category. And that is not feasible to construct a townhouse. Um, you, you just won't be able to meet market, um, criteria to develop attached housing on a 5,000 square foot lot. Unless there were large constraints on another part of the lot or something, it's very unlikely to happen. So we're proposing a 1,200, uh, square foot average for townhouse, which is a little less than what is in our R5 zoning district. That is 1,500 square feet. So the idea of the MH is to have slightly denser development. Make sure that the barriers are a little less to providing that workforce housing that our recent, um, housing needs analysis, 2021 identified as a, a needed housing type. Um, all of these types of housing were identified as needing to be increased opportunities for the city. The other thing that's kind of interesting is I've sent these changes to the state for review as we're required to do. And the state actually commented that our min- minimum density was a little high. So at 30 units for minimum density in most cases, that might be a little higher than what Gladstone might see develop based on market conditions. They did recommend reducing that to 25 units per net acre rather than 30. And that is consistent with, uh, nearby jurisdictions such as Milwaukee, Happy Valley, um, and Clackamas County to have a slightly lower minimum density to allow for, um, site, um, issues or innovative design techniques. So we are proposing that that minimum density go down a bit. So the window just gets a little bigger of what you can do on the property to accommodate the proposed development. So with that, uh, those are the changes that are being proposed this evening. Again, they do, uh, meet the city's policy initiatives and strategic goals related to housing and concentrating your denser development types into the MR zoning district. The proposal, um, the planning commission recommendation within your packet this evening does demonstrate compliance with all of the required applicable codes and criteria to adopt a land use action for text amendment. So staff joins planning commission in the recommendation for approval of the proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one question on that, uh, the recommendation from the state to lower the minimum density to 25.
Yes.
It doesn't appear on the chart. It, there's, there are some double asterisks on 26, 32, 32 and 29 in that right-hand column. So when we get to the language of changing the code itself, uh, are you proposing then that 25 be the figure for each of those, uh, items?
Yes. And I will just pull up my code packet really quickly so I can just make sure.
I, I think I see it, for example, on, uh, 14 dash seven. The right, the little box on the, in the lower right-hand, in no case shall the ma- minimum density exceed, you know, 30 is crossed out and 25 is put in there. So.
Okay. Let me just get there. Sorry. I'm not more prepared. Okay. 14, uh, 14 dash seven. There it is. Yes. So that is the proposed code language that we would strike 30 and insert 25.
Okay. And so there's similar language in the other applicable sections, uh, to that.
This is the section for minimum density. There's, um, this covers all of the housing types.
Oh, okay.
So anywhere that a minimum would fall higher than 25, it automatically reduces to 25. But as you can see on the screen, like triplex is at 24 already and duplex is at 22. So those would stay.
Okay.
Everything else would reduce to 25.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Um, this is a pretty complex set of regulations. Uh, are there, I assume there are some other questions. Uh, now, at, at this point, we are not yet debating the merits of this. We're just asking questions of staff to clarify our understanding of what's in here. Uh, the, Council Alexander, you have a question?
Just one, just so I see duplex, triplex, quadplex, cottage cluster, multi. ADU fall into this?
Um, ADU does not fall into this because it's permitted in all zones. Um, they're regulated separately. If you have a duplex, um, you, you have to declare. If you have a single family home and another unit on the property, you have to declare whether it's a duplex or an ADU. And we have different standards for each. So we require that declaration and that's consistent with the state middle housing law.
Okay. So no changes for us?
No changes for ADUs.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Cook?
Yeah. Could you, so this is, all these changes are relevant to the MH zone.
Yes.
Um, for those of us who haven't memorized with where that is in Gladstone, could you give us some general broad strokes about where that might be in town?
Yes. And on my drive over here, I thought, gosh, it would have been good for me to include a zoning map in my presentation. But since I hadn't done that, I did pull it up, um, in preparation for that question. So, um, it is, um, everything behind the auto dealerships on the west side of McLaughlin. Um, it is everything behind the, the auto dealerships and other commercial uses on McLaughlin. And then, um, on the east side of McLaughlin, it's behind the commercial zoning north of Harford, Hereford, Herford. Okay. I knew I was going to trip up on that. North of Herford. So there's, um, a good swath of it east of McLaughlin, just behind the commercial properties. And then, uh, excuse me, west of McLaughlin and then east of McLaughlin, north of Herford. Um, and then there's one other pocket in town and that is on Webster Road on the west side, um, just north of where Kason comes in. I believe.
Correct.
So there's a commercial area and then, um, just north of that is, um, well, MR zoning.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. I'm sorry to not have included the map. Uh, that was a miss.
All right. Other questions for clarification? Counselor Garland?
Um, going back to the, uh, townhouse.
Yes.
Why, why make it lower than, um, the 1,500 that is standard?
Well, 1,500 is our, our five standard. So that's kind of a middle density housing, um, type zone. And this is our high density zones. We want to encourage more units to be developed in this area to provide, um, you know, potentially lower price points of that type of housing to support workforce housing.
And does a 1,200 square foot lot allow for a garage facility or par- off-street parking of some sort?
It, it could. Yeah. It, it would be a multi-layer, um, structure. Yep.
So as I drive down Webster Road, um, on the right-hand side, there's some units that are pretty, there, I think there's three-story garage on the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
Um, kind of sparse over there on the side of the hill. Is that the kind of picture in my mind that I'm looking at?
I, yeah, I don't have the same picture exactly because I, I don't know the exact area, but I would assume so. That it's, um, pretty much a garage and an entry on the first level and then the living is above.
Okay. And um, I ju- I guess I'm just going back a little bit to this 1,200 to 1,500 square foot. I'm not sure that I'm, I'm in complete agreement with it, but I'll think about it.
So if you had a 6,000 square foot lot, you could put four units in at 1,500 square feet and five units in at 1,200 square feet. So it, it is slightly, uh, more dense, more units created. Um, that's, that's the difference, uh, in, uh, in a larger lot, it would be proportionally more as well.
That's correct. Yeah. As, as your lot sizes increase, the amount of units that are available potentially increases as well as your, as your parent parcel for townhouses. Cause townhouses are the only type of middle housing that are on their own piece of property. Um, all of the other middle housing types are multiple units on one, uh, more, two or more units on one parcel.
Right. And I think the thing I go back to is, um, which I'm sure I sound like a broken record here. The need for more parking on the Webster Ridge property. Uh, there is a cul-de-sac off of Herford that you can't, some of the residents can't even park on their cul-de-sac street because there's not enough off-street parking and their places. And, um, the new build off of, um, Glen Echo that on the one side, we, uh, I, I won't say we, the council at the time, uh, made it so that they didn't have to have sidewalks on both sides, which gave them more property. But you can't find, you, you, to drive down that street is kind of a hazard because there's so many cars parked on the street because there's not enough parking. So I know that the state doesn't call for it, but y- you can't look at it and not realize that it's needed. So that.
All right. Hold, hold on to those issues and bring them back.
I know. That's just where my thought on that 1,500
Yeah.
to 1,200.
Okay. All right. Uh, staff, do you, are you aware of any correspondence on this particular item, uh, to come before us? It's not included in our packet.
I am not aware of any.
I have nothing either.
Okay. Um, oh yes. Counselor, um, uh, Roberts, go ahead with your question.
Thank you. I just want to clarify with you, Heather. Looking at the bottom of 14, eight, uh, section one dimensional standards. So we have those crossed out or stricken through rather. Uh, but looking back at 14, six, is that to say those dimensional standards are, uh, increasing? Our, the setbacks are growing and not in fact being removed? Cause I think I've read that a couple of different ways at different times.
So on, um, 14 dash eight, we are striking the, um, cottage standard setbacks in that location because they are addressed in the table. And so the table would apply to cottage clusters.
Okay. So they're being removed just as a redundancy.
Right.
Okay.
They're, they're in there twice, but the reference under cottage clusters refers you back to the R5 zone. It's less clear than just letting the table do the work.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Heather.
Okay. We've reached the point in, uh, in the hearing where we, um, are, are ready to hear public testimony. Um, we have a card here from, uh, John Kilstrom. You indicated a desire to address the Gladstone Municipal Code. I assume you meant this, this, uh, not this agenda item. At the end for a general discussion. Okay. Uh, do we have anyone else here who was asked to speak in support of this proposal?
I have not received any requests.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak, uh, either in support or in opposition then?
I've received no requests for either.
All right. Um, I will, um, I will entertain a motion to open the public testimony on this, but then we will immediately close it since there is none. So go ahead. Just to follow the rules, let's go ahead and, uh, take, do that motion.
I had one more question.
Oh, you do? Okay. No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Questions. Um, again for Heather, looking at 14 dash five, section five, swimming pools. Uh, does this require then that if someone is to put some kind of swimming pool on their property, whether, uh, in the ground or above, that there is a fence requirement as there is in many places? Are we requiring that?
We do not require it in the development code because it is required by the building code.
Okay. So that's still specified elsewhere.
That's required by state law.
And in Gladstone, is that still six feet standard or?
I don't know. It's Clackamas County that processes our building permits for the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Well, let me see. Um, I hereby open the, the, the public testimony portion of this meeting. We have heard that there is no public testimony. Is there a motion to close the public testimony portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second. Thank you. All right.
Um, it has been moved and seconded to close the public testimony. Uh, call the roll, please. Uh, Tammy?
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The, the public testimony portion of this hearing is closed. Uh, are there any staff comments, anything to add which specifically addresses questions that we have not already addressed?
I don't, I don't believe so at this time.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Um, so the hearing on, uh, item number TXT, oops, how to turn the page. TXT dash 23 dash 01 is now closed to additional testimony. Now the, the council can deliberate to a decision. So, um, is there discussion by the council? Counselor Garland, you made some of your concerns, uh, uh, we've made us aware of those concerns already. You want to add anything else? So, um,
No. I would like to just, again, the parking. And we can all think it doesn't, it isn't a problem. It's a problem.
All right. And, uh, He- Heather, can I ask one more thing? Uh, did we address any parking minimums in this, uh, code, these code changes here?
We did not. Our standard of one parking space per dwelling unit continues as is written in our parking code section.
Okay. So we did not loosen or? Okay, so we did not loosen or remove any minimums by this action?
No, no parking changes are proposed this evening.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Council Alexander.
At the risk of sounding like I don't know what's going on, why are we doing this?
We are doing this to bring the MR zoning district into alignment with the city's goals of, from the Housing Needs Analysis to reduce barriers to workforce housing, particularly in our higher density zoning district. So we want to concentrate our higher density development into the MR zoning so that we can then see more single-family detached in the R7.2 and then single-family attached and detached is more typical in your R5, although other middle housing is permitted per state law. So we are doing this to meet the goals and policies of the Housing Needs Analysis the city recently adopted to bring the zoning code up to date with state regulations to provide a clear and objective pathway for reviewing all residential type and to make sure that we're providing opportunity for housing development in the city.
Okay, thank you.
That term middle housing originated with an architect from California, I think, who used the term missing middle housing. And he had a very famous little chart that you'll see in a lot of books to discuss this issue where he talks about the big span between single-family homes on one side and apartment buildings on the other side. And the types of houses that we've discussed here duplex, triplex, fourplex, cottage cluster. Those are the ones in the middle of that span that, that began to disappear from a lot of communities years ago. And so what cities are doing in order to enable people to have an option between a single-family home, which some smaller families don't really want to have, or single individuals, or an apartment, which some people don't want to live in. We're creating options to, to fill that, that gap and to provide different sizes and structures of homes, which presumably would also be at different price points. And that will theoretically enable more people to find a home that's attainable for their income level that will enable them to maybe to live in the city in which they work and not have to commute a long way and to be a starter property and eventually they can move up to something bigger later on. But as someone who served and attended a lot of those Housing Needs Analysis meetings we had over the years, we didn't just identify the number of new units that we want to be able to have in the community. We also said, you know, a certain percentage of them will be single-family homes. Another percentage of them will be apartments and another percentage will be something in between. And so you have to enable your code to allow those in-between things, which we're doing here. You also have to make it so a developer doesn't have to go to the Planning Commission for approval every single time they want to do one of these. That can add to the cost as well. So by having clear and objective standards for how these, this type of house will look, it's very easy for the planning department to say, yes, you've met the standards, the setbacks are right, the lot size is right. So you have approval to do this because we've zoned it that way now. Do I have any of that wrong or is that, is that?
That was really well put. Thank you. I wish I had included some of those talking points in my portion.
All right. Well, yeah, at, at the point where we're starting to advocate for this, you know, I, this is one of the things I've, I've, I've felt. You know, there are differences of opinion over whether we'll see these forms of housing developed. But you have to make it possible. You have to, to, to set the table and then get out of the way and let the developers do it if it's going to happen. And if you keep the, the barriers up, it won't happen at all. So that's why it's, it's come before us. Other questions or comments on this matter? Are we ready to take some action? I think there is. Do I have a motion on the proposal? Let me see. There is a recommendation from staff on page 14-1, if someone would like to use that to guide a motion.
I would like to consider bringing that number back to 1500 square feet on the townhouses.
All right, you're proposing an amendment to, I don't know where I'd find that particular section in the code. Thank you. Oh. On 14-6, Townhouse Project, right now I, I, I see it reads 1,200 square foot average. So are you proposing to amend that to 1,500?
Yes.
All right, there is a motion to amend the 1,200 square foot average minimum per lot for townhouses on page 14-6. That's in Section 17.14.050. Is there a second to the motion?
I think I'm amenable, but is it within our power to request input from Heather or Mr. Smith from?
Certainly, if, if you second it, then we can discuss it and that, that would be a good time to, to do it. Yeah.
Then at this time, I will second that motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. You have a question for clarification?
I simply would like if we could get more input from Heather or Mr. Smith from the Planning Commission.
Yeah, so 1,200 square feet is an industry standard for that type of development in a higher density zoning district, whereas 1,500 square feet is a more medium density type development for townhouses. So it was the goal of this update to really focus the opportunity. It doesn't mean that it's all going to be 1,200 square foot lots. It could still be 1,500 square foot lots if that's what makes sense for that area and the financing of the project, the market trends. It's a minimum, not a, when, you know, it, it's not, how do I say that? It, it doesn't mean that we won't see 1,500 square feet, but it could allow innovation in design. It could allow that one additional unit of housing to go in that could be at a price point that people who couldn't afford something that's at a 1,500 square foot lot could afford. So it just provides more options. You still have the 1,500 square foot in your R5. So that's the minimum average for those lots. But allowing a 1,200 square foot unit in this zone just increases those housing options and reduces the barriers to getting these housing types built.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. Any further discussion on the motion to amend?
Can I ask one?
Councilor Garland.
See that map? Can you share that map?
I, can, can you share the zoning map for the city, Tammy?
Yes, I would just, what's the reasoning for that? I mean, your reasoning, so I understand what you're thinking.
Because I've seen a couple of properties where they've really shoved stuff in there and there's nothing attractive about it.
I, I don't want to. I want to be careful how I say this, but I don't know that the change between 1,200 and 1,500 changes what's available as far as on-street parking in a significant way. So I don't know that you gain anything between 1,200 and 1,500 square feet in an, in a significant way with on-street parking. That type of housing development is typically best suited with garages, potentially alley-loaded. But parking is becoming less and less the focus of what we're planning for with housing and even with employment lands. So I don't want to overstate that parking issues would be resolved at the change between these two lot sizes.
And Councilor Garland, I hear you saying more than just parking, you're concerned with aesthetics too of the, the units appearing smaller than you're comfortable with. Okay, all right. Let's, let's be clear on that. So looking at this map, you indicated we can see the sort of, is it the? Oh, well, you tell us which one, the orange.
Orange-ish, yes. Yeah, marigold.
So the areas to the west of McLaughlin in the lower corner and east of McLaughlin, north of Herford, to the right of the commercial zone there.
Mayor, this is Veronica. I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but I'm not seeing the map on the screen. I'm seeing the, just the, the tab for the website for the city. I'm so sorry to interrupt you there.
Oh, okay, we can see it on our screen. So, oh, can you, can you change the size on your screen at home? I find sometimes.
It's not showing at all. Okay, that looks like it might work. There we go. Yes, thank you.
Okay. And you want to bring it back to us?
Try it here, hang on.
Okay. All right, and the sort of red triangle on the right side of the map is the Gladstone Nature Park. The area just to the north of that is also this orange zone. And and we may have apartment-type buildings on that east side of the city that maybe are in an R7 zone.
I'm sorry, was that a question for me?
Yeah, I'm, 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 I, I see the, where the Webster Ridge Apartments are.
Yes.
I thought there were a lot of apartments on Webster on the right, a little farther up the hill. And I don't see the orange zone. So maybe they, those were pre-existing and they're still part of the R7 zone.
That could be.
Okay. So some of this is already built out.
The majority of it is. For your HNA, you really only have like an acre of vacant MR. So really you're talking about an acre vacant and then redevelopment potential. And I will say that I had a lot of questions from property owners of this zone because we were required by state law to send out what's called Measure 56 notice to everyone who owns this property because we're removing the single-family home ability. So we're changing what you can do on your property. And a few, maybe three of the eight or nine calls I took were, I might want to redevelop my property in the next 10 years or so. So I think there could be some redevelopment potential under these standards, but we are not talking about a large amount of development here.
Okay, so just because something is an apartment building right now, it doesn't necessarily fall into the zone that we're changing right now. So if an apartment building, for example, there are apartments right across the street from the current library, right next door to the site of the new library. Those are in the R5, medium-density, single-family home zone. But they're, they're not violation of that zone because they were there. But if they wanted to redevelop, they would have to come under the R5 zone.
That is correct. They would not come under these standards. It is possible, so they, they are R5 for sure because it could be in the C2 along there as well.
Oh, that's right, depending on how close they are to Portland. That's correct.
So there is the downtown overlay that now has criteria for residential development as well. And that, whatever that falls, whether R5 or downtown overlay slash C2, those would be the applicable standards. So these would only apply to the orange MR zoned properties.
Thank you for that clarification, for being more familiar with it. I, I just thought it was an easy example that everybody had seen a lot of, but you're right. Okay. All right, there is still a motion to amend this particular section. Are we ready to take a vote on the proposed amendment?
If, if I might make a comment, I think, you know, my, my, my preference is to keep it at 1,200 with the understanding that, you know, we have goals as a council and goals as a city. And so often we're restricted by funding, staff time, you know, there's so many restrictions on what we can do. You know, this is one of those situations where we're actually potentially able to make positive change by just easing regulation, by just taking away regulation and allowing the free market to provide services to folks in our community who, who need assistance and who need affordable housing. So I think this is kind of an easy win where, you know, we don't have to spend any money. We don't have to add any regulation. In fact, we're taking regulation away to allow the market to meet these needs. So I'm grateful, Heather, for your time spent developing this work. This is a lot of work as well as the planning committee. I'm sorry Natalie wasn't here to see the, the, the work that she's done, so.
Commissioner Pat Smith from Planning Commission is here tonight and he has been through this already at that level. All right, are we ready to take a vote on the proposed amendment? All right, Tammy, will you call the roll, please? So just for clarification, the amendment is Section 17.14.050, the dimensional standards. The one regarding townhouses, Councilor Garland has moved that we change the, the average minimum from 1,200 square feet to 1,500 square feet. All right, so we need a yes or no vote from councilors. Go ahead.
Counselor, Counselor Huckabee, no. Counselor Alexander.
No.
Counselor Rachel.
No.
Counselor Cook.
No.
Counselor Roberts.
No.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
No. So the motion to amend fails. We will now consider, are there any other proposed amendments for the rest of the language in this ordinance? Okay, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
I will make the motion to approve ordinance 1522, approving text amendments to the Gladstone Municipal Code, Chapter 17.14, MR Multi-Houshold Residential District City File TXT dash 23 dash 01.
I will second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Huckabee and seconded by Counselor Roberts. Any further discussion? All right, Tammy, call the roll on this first reading of the ordinance.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Rachel.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The motion has been approved unanimously. Remind me of what that means as far as where we go from here?
You only have to do one reading now if it's approved unanimously according to the city charter that was approved. So I believe you're done, but I will confirm with the city attorney.
All right.
Yes.
And he's giving us a thumbs up. All right, I watched so many meetings where you had to do things twice that I just wanted to be sure we were doing it properly. So thank you. That's one of the great changes in our new city charter. Thank you, Councilor Garland, for helping to get that in there. Think of all the time we're saving. All right, so the ordinance has been approved. We move on to item number 15. Staff, go ahead and present this one for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather. So at your last work session, we talked in detail regarding the fire and a medical emergency services levy and the police and communications levy. Both of those will expire in 2024. We also discussed this during our budget process. At our work session, we got a consensus from the city council to move forward in bringing back a resolution. As the next step, we need the city council to approve the resolution so that we could submit to the registered voters of the city a continued local option tax. For the first one we're going to do is Resolution Number 221 for the Gladstone Police Department at a tax rate of 68 cents per thousand assessed value annually for five years to provide police services. You do have a resolution in your packet. The city, the city attorney is going to talk about one change being proposed and it's going to be on 15-2 under the question. So I will have Chad go over that.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. So because this is a local option levy, there are certain requirements that we have to follow under state law. And there was some confusion in the advice that our office gave to Tammy Bannock, so I apologize for that. And simply put, what we need to do is have some language after the question. And that language just notifies the voters that the measure renews current local option taxes. And that's the exact sentence that has to go in after the question. And so that would be in Section 1 of the resolution where you have the question. And then again, in And then again, in section four, where you have the question repeated again, we just need to add the language that this measure renews current local option taxes. And so to accomplish that, what I would propose is if you are inclined to make a motion to approve this resolution, that you would just have the motion say that you have moved to adopt resolution twelve twenty twelve twenty one with the addition of the statement after the question as required by ORS two eight zero point zero seven zero. And so that would accomplish amending the resolution as I just mentioned and resolve this issue. So the question has the required language under state law. And again, I apologize for the, the confusion our office caused on that.
Thank you for correcting it and bringing it to our attention. Is there any discussion from, well, let's see. Let's, let's have a motion. Well, let's, let's just discuss it first. Any questions of staff regarding this resolution? Counselor Garlington?
So we're looking at the highlighted section under section one at the question, and that doesn't need to be under section four as well, then?
Yeah, it should be under section four, which is why when I propose the language for the resolution that we just add to the question, the, the statement required by ORS two eight zero point zero seven zero, and that will amend the full res- full resolution accordingly. But yeah, that same language under section one would then be included under section four.
Okay.
All right, is anyone ready to attempt the motion?
I've got it.
Counselor Roberts?
I will move to approve resolution number one two two one. Resolution submitting to the registered voters of the city, a continued local option tax at a rate of sixty eight cents per thousand assessed value annually for five years to provide police services with the addition in section four as provided pursuant to ORS two eight zero point zero seven zero. I will second.
All right, and just to clarify, that addition is in both section one and section four. The item we got tonight added the language of section one, it needs to be added to section four as well. All right, it's been moved by Counselor Roberts and seconded by Counselor Alexander. Any further discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Riechel?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes, resolution number one two two one with changes is approved. We move on to the next item.
So now resolution number one two 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 is in regards to renewing the fire and medical emergency services. And this is at thirty one cents per thousand assessed value annually for five years to provide fire and emergency medical services. So we will also need a motion to amend this resolution for section one and section four highlighting the same ORS statute.
Okay, any questions or discussion from council members? All right, I will entertain a motion again. Counselor Garlington, you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify for anybody wondering that this does say it, it funds eighteen, approximately eighteen percent of the total fire and emergency services, the rest coming out of general funds. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And when it says funding the services, it is funding the amount that we pay as a contract to Clackamas County?
Clackamas Fire District.
Fire District, yes.
That is correct.
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve resolution number one two two two. A resolution submitting to the registered voters of the city, a continued local option tax rate at thirty one cents per thousand assessed value annually for five years to provide fire and emergency medical services with the additions provided to sections one and section four pursuant to ORS two eight zero point zero seven zero. I'll second.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Well, let's see, I think because of the high speed internet that Counselor Riechel has, she actually got in under the wire here. So I'm going to say it's moved by Counselor Roberts, seconded by Counselor Riechel. Any further discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Riechel?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes. Resolution number one two 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 has passed, so these items are now referred to the voters and the next decision will be theirs.
That is correct. We are required to publish them in the next circulation. So anybody has seven days to appeal. And after the appeal period, then we will send them into the elections office to get a ballot measure title.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda, Chief Schmerber, you would like to give us a report, an update on a program that you described a little bit for us during our budget session, I believe, and we'll hear more about it tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm sorry for, it's going to be a little more lengthy than I'm, I'm used to with the staff report, but there's a lot of information I'd like to share. Since two thousand nineteen, the City of Gladstone Police Department has collaborated with the Clackamas County Juvenile Department, who originally contracted with Patriot Creek for diversionary programs for, for our youth. In two thousand twenty, the Juvenile Department partnered with Latino Network utilizing a restoring individuals' community and hope called the Rich Divergence Program. The Rich Divergence Program provides community-based interventions for all Clackamas County youth who have committed low-level offenses and are generally at low risk to reoffend. The program utilizes restorative justice values and principles where youth are held accountable to their victims and community. Access to the Rich Program is determined by the Clackamas County Juvenile Department. If the offense committed by the youth is minor and a first offense, the Juvenile Department will refer the case over to the Rich Program. The program coordinator will contact parents inquiring about the youth's participation in the program. And if agreed, all parties enter into an agreement. I have attached, as you're aware, Latino Network brochure to the staff report, which explains a little bit more detail about the program and eligibility of it. Providing, providing our youth the opportunity to learn from their mistakes through intervention to make better choices in the future is a philosophy the Gladstone Police Department believes in. Additionally, it allows the Clackamas County Juvenile Department to focus on youth who have medium to high risk to focus on medium to high risk to reoffend. Data received from Latino Network shows that since two thousand twenty one, the Clackamas County Juvenile Department referred forty two Gladstone cases over to the Rich Divergence Program. Twenty nine of those forty two cases met the diversion criteria and participated in rich. I also have some data that I was able to capture today regarding the Rich Divergence Program. And this is countywide. They couldn't break it down specifically for the City of Gladstone quite yet, but they're working on that data now. But the Rich Divergence Program served three hundred ninety one youth in the, in the calendar years twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Of those three hundred ninety one, one hundred ninety two completed the program with ninety eight percent successfully completed the program in those years. Another thirty one percent or one hundred and twenty three of the three hundred ninety one are currently in services or in engagement processes. The twenty twenty one recidivism rate for the diversion is only eight point three percent. So I think that's a good indication that there's, there's a lot of success. And I had great conversations with, with Latino Network over the, over the last two weeks, along with Clackamas County Juvenile Department, and the focus really is on these youths. The City of Gladstone Police Department supports the efforts of Clackamas County Juvenile Department to contract with Latino Network. The Rich Divergence Program is recognized as an integral resource to the juvenile justice system as a community and community as a whole. The Clackamas County Juvenile Department is asking cities to help subsidize these referral costs. Suggested contribution for the City of Gladstone is twenty five hundred dollars a year, and it's based on the size of the city. The work being conducted by Latino Network is well worth the investment intervened early with our youth for the purpose of helping develop good, strong community members. And that was a statement by me that I believed in my entire career. So the investment in our youth will pay off in the future.
Thank you for the report. The, the staff report indicates that the twenty five hundred dollar cost is already in our budget. That's where we heard about this first from you. So we're not asking to, you know, allocate new funding for this. It's something we anticipated that would happen.
That, that's correct. And, and the reason this is coming before the council is you have not heard about this program before. So, and I thought it was important to share.
And, and what you're asking us to do tonight, then, is to enter into an intergovernmental agreement to be a part of the program.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the action that we need to take. Do council members have questions about the program itself? Counselor Riechel, go ahead.
Chief, I was just wondering if you could go over that data from the county again. I was trying to write it all down, but I didn't get it all.
Yeah, and in fact, I can forward the information out to the city administrator who can forward it back out to you.
That would be great.
You want, because there's, there's other, it's, it's even broken down into, into youth gender, race, et cetera. So there's a lot more information that is in this that they've broken down. And it might be good that I send all this along with whatever data they come up with specifically for Gladstone youth.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
One clarification, it's identified as a program, the Latino Network. Just to be clear, it is not exclusively for youth to identify as Latino.
That's correct. It's for all youth.
Okay.
It's for all youth in Clackamas County.
Very good, thank you. Other questions? Counselor Huckabee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I had a question if there is an overlap in these programs, considering the Latino Network involvement, the Juvenile Department at Clackamas County, and our Gladstone PD. The school district also has a program. And it is called SBIRT, Screening Brief Intervention and Referral to Treatment Program. And it is a pilot program that started last year in our school district, which is also put on by the Latino Network and the Clackamas County Juvenile Department. So is there any overlap there?
No, we don't see any overlap. I know I've discussed this in the school district. I knew when I brought up Latino Network, they were aware. I don't know in detail about the school district's program. But the school district program, if, and I'm going to make a huge assumption here, so, but it just makes sense, is that whatever issues they're dealing with in their schools is, is, might be something we're going to deal with more, the criminal offenses that are outside that or that we get called to. So if, let's just say last night we arrested five youth for minor possession of alcohol. They may get referred to the Juvenile Department by us. And then Juvenile Department may reach out, especially if they're, they're first offense, reach out to Latino Network because they may qualify to go through that program. Not certain how the school, what the school's process is, but I just know that, that they're familiar with Latino Network. That would be my guess.
Okay.
So we're kind of separate, so I don't know if there's an overlap, really.
Yeah, part of their program is to identify students with substance abuse issues, which we know criminality and substance abuse kind of go hand in hand. So just wondering if they are talking at all between the two programs.
And I would imagine Latino, with their network that they have, I, I'm sure there's communication in and out, so.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Garlington?
So this is just a little bit kind of going outside the circle of this. In the last budget, there was some money that I, and I know that we've moved on to the next budget for juvenile diversion program. So this time that amount is a little bit less, but it's, it's more than this twenty five hundred dollars. So this twenty five hundred dollars, is this for one year and we would, we would still have enough money to fund it yet another year?
That's correct. So we budgeted for the biennium five thousand. So, so the next time you see this next year, it might hopefully be on the consent agenda because you're already aware of it. So, but.
And I believe the budget, though, for the next two years is sixty five hundred dollars. I found it and now I've lost it. My question is, what other things can be done? Or did you have other plans? I'm all in agreement for this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any other plans.
Okay.
But I'll confirm with the budget because it, it should be five thousand.
Okay.
All right, any additional questions or comment deliberation? Counselor Roberts?
I had not a question again. I just noticed on seventeen five, under your contact information, chief, it was the wrong address listed.
Now, that's the old
The old city hall.
Police station address.
Under my contact information, seventeen five, it's still list five three five Portland Ave. Oh, I'll have to correct that. Small thing, but you know, since it was in there. But thank you. This looks great.
All right, is someone ready to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion, we continue support of the Rich Divergence Program. And that the city entered into an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Juvenile Department and the City of Gladstone effective July first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Alexander and seconded by Counselor Huckabee. Any more discussion? Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Riechel?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously, and the agreement is entered into by, by the city. I guess the other side will have to approve it or has already had some.
I think they're waiting for it.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Chief Schmerber. Staff, is there any business carried forward?
Nope, thank you.
All right, we move to business from the audience. We did get a card. And I would like to call on John Kilstrom to come forward. You have three minutes. I see you are a resident of the City of Gladstone. That's all the address information we really need. Go ahead.
Yes, John Kilstrom. Good evening, Mayor Milch and, and the council. I had just two things I wanted to cover. Upon reviewing the Gladstone Municipal Codes, I've noted that some of them are not general, gender neutral. So I think the, would suggest, would like to see that that happens. One of the examples is the chief, it says in his designee, things like that. So the second thing I would like to say is also as a first time attendee to the Fourth of July Festival was fantastic and fun. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, you know, we're looking at, at many sections of our code, and that's one of those things we could take into consideration. So appreciate you bringing it to our attention. All right, it is time for business from the council. Let's just go in numerical order, starting with Counselor Huckabee, if you are ready.
I'm ready because I don't think I have anything other than I enjoyed the picnic and lots of hot dogs going out and snow cones and community, and it was great. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Counselor Alexander.
I have nothing. I have nothing. Everything's going great.
Counselor Riechel?
Yeah, I just have a couple of updates from the Parks Board meeting last night. Let's see, they did the vote on the Meldrum Bar Playground and have selected option B, which was chosen by the community. I believe there were two hundred and fifty-ish votes for option B out of four hundred and seventeen votes. And so they're going to settle on some minor details and then get that ordered, and we're expecting fall installation for that. Also, at the same time, the Robin Hood swings will go in at that similar time as Meldrum. Let's see. The SDA project to build the dog park at Meldrum has been pushed Um, the S C A project to build the dog park at Meldrum has been pushed out to consideration for next year. Um, but they will help this year with some repainting and repair of some, uh, buildings. And let's see, Michelle from the community center came to visit and, um, was discussing their music on the greens, which is coming up. Um, and I forgot to write down the date. I don't know if maybe Counselor Huckabee knows what that is. Um, for the senior center, community center music on the greens, but that's coming up. And they're very excited about that. And that's all I've got. Also, the barbecue was a blast. Thank you.
Music on the greens will be August eleventh. You should get a flyer this Friday.
I think we got some communication that said it was the tenth, but it is the Friday, the eleventh.
It is Friday, the eleventh.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I would correct that on my own calendar. Counselor Cook?
Uh, not much to report here. Also, a big fan of the picnic. Thank you, Chief Schmerber. Uh, fire department also did a fabulous job. Um, all the volunteers were out. It was really wonderful experience. Um, also, uh, I want to, I was challenged. I checked the Rotary, uh, volunteer list for the Gladstone Community Festival. I saw Counselor Garland's name on there and I thought, well, I can't let her one up me. So, um, uh, I added myself to the inflatables on Friday afternoon. I know Counselor Huckabee will also be on inflatable patrol. Um, so for anyone out there who hasn't yet signed up, it's a blast. Um, please join us.
Counselor Roberts?
Uh, very little, same as everyone else. Um, I attended our N C C W C meeting last month quarterly. Uh, not too much of note to say, um, the biggest thing I just wanted to bring back from, to the council is that the work that Public Works has done on the mains that leak and that sort of thing within our, uh, system um, is really been a substantial change for the, uh, wastewater. And so we've seen a lot of money recouped in that. And so as a whole, um, Oak Lodge has been working on the same thing. And so globally, the N C C W C is in a very good position. That's all.
Thank you for that report, Counselor Garland.
Um, I too would like to say thank you for the Fourth of July, uh, hot dog feed. It was a blast. Um, I took a little boy home who was exhausted and that's always really nice when grandma is exhausted also. Um, I do hope to see a lot of people at the festival this year and, um, yes, let's all take that challenge and do some volunteer work at the inflatables. I figured it was something I could do and I wanted to stay as far away from the dunk tank as possible. Um, and I'd like to thank the senior center staff for including those photos of the senior center, I'm, the community center. I haven't been able to get over there, um, during work hours, uh, you know, during daytime hours, but as soon as I can, I want to go see it in person and, and I'm really excited about that. And Chief Schmerber, you're right, that is five thousand dollars. So thank you for making sure you had enough money to pay for that two years in a row. Uh, I think that's all. Please, everybody come out for the festival. It's, people have put so much time and effort into it and it's just great to see everybody from Gladstone come together and play bingo and have a beer. So that's all.
I also had a big, uh, extended family presence at the, uh, picnic and enjoyed it as much as everyone else, uh, and as did my family members. So thank you to the police and fire department for that. Uh, our last work session, we were talking about, uh, possible expenditures of some additional, uh, ARPA funds that the city had and, uh, certain kinds of community services were brought up. Uh, there was a community facility that people had been asking about, and I put out a phone call to, uh, the agency, the nonprofit that had managed that facility at one time. And, uh, the person I called was on vacation, but then called me back the following week to let me know the status and it looks like things might be moving in a good direction. Um, and I got into a discussion with a couple of people about, uh, childcare in this community and realized that, uh, the city council back in August of last year had a really good work session that included presentations from, uh, the director of the Clackamas, um, workforce partnership and, uh, somebody related to, uh, uh, childcare in Clackamas County. So I would encourage, uh, Counselor Garland, you chaired that meeting as council president that night. Uh, did a great job. There were good questions and comments from the, the counselors who were, uh, on the council at that time. And, uh, I would commend that to all of you to watch because it's good information for us. Uh, if we intend to move forward to, uh, expanding or trying to expand those kinds of services in our community. The woman who called me back, turned out she attended a meeting of, uh, another group of local partners working together on community issues. Uh, they are having a second meeting tomorrow morning that I'm going to watch on Zoom and participate with about, uh, expanding, uh, the kinds of services that really strengthen the community, including, uh, education, childcare. Uh, you know, the, the other things that kind of bring together and, and strengthen us. Uh, and so it, it fits in with our economic development goals as a community. It fits in with our, our livability goals as a community. There were not any elected officials. The last time they met, I watched a short video presentation, but I hope the, I, maybe I will, maybe I'll be the only one there, but I'd like the county to know that Gladstone wants to be involved in things that improve our, the lives of our citizens and of, and our city within the region. Uh, so I plan to attend that tomorrow. I think that's all I have for tonight is, oh, Counselor Riechel, you, your hand is still up. You had something else you wanted to add?
I have one more. I just had a quick question. You were discussing that work session from last year. Do you recall the date of that work session?
August twenty third.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty two. Um, and it's about the first fifty minutes of it, uh, are on that issue. There were some other issues as well. Uh, and I'm sure the, the rest of it is probably good too, but that's the part I've watched. All right. Is there a motion to? Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
All motion.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Riechel, seconded by Counselor Roberts. Uh, Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, uh, the meeting is adjourned at eight forty nine P M.